Okay, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Mr. Bracker, since you're up, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Could you only honor the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Oh, I didn't get a pen. Thank you. Item B, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, from the consent agenda, if you want to move it up to action item, and let me find which one it is.
This was Bob's job. Just kidding.
I'm trying to find it.
Okay, it's number s— no. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Number eighteen. If we could remove it from the consent agenda and put it under action items. Thank you.
Well, there's the— okay, under I. So it'll be eighteen, okay. And that's the one we're going to have an executive session prior to that. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the manager that we adopt item under J-18, be moved to action items I-18. Chair will entertain a motion to deviate as necessary and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll go on to item C, call to the public. Mr. Verdugo, if you come up and state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Joe Verdugo, right in for Supervisor Number One, District Number One. Address A-14, North Perkins Avenue. I'm here for something that's been under my skin for so many years that I wanted to present it to the public hearing to the Board of Supervisors that hasn't been taken care of. I'm running for Supervisor District One for the reason is I got this ballot from my aunt that I could have written my name and scribbled her name and had a good vote. But she's been deceased for twenty years. And we haven't taken care of this problem. And I would like to take it into consideration on these dead votes, okay? I don't know how many there are out there, but I'm going to win this primarily the right way, not the wrong way. So, thank you very much. Where do I leave this?
Take it to the Recorder's Office, please, and let them know.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience under call to the public? Hearing none. We'll go on to Zoom, and I have Greg Gorton. Are you on Zoom?
He just joined in.
Hey, Greg? Or Greg Gordon? If you're muted, can you unmute yourself? We can't hear you.
I see him.
Is he down below the—
Certainly he's below.
There you go.
Can you hear us, Greg?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, so, sir, once you state your name, your address, you have three minutes to address the board. So, go ahead and begin, please.
Yes, my name is Greg, G-R-E-G-G, Gorton, G-O-R-T-O-N. I'm a resident of Cross Creek Road in Patagonia. And I am speaking about the Emily Lane situation. The Emily Lane to Cross Creek Road route on the north side of Patagonia has historically served as a crucial evacuation and exit route for residents of the San Antonio Road community. In June, it was blocked at the behest, we learned later, of South 32. But the residents were not informed at that time. So we were shocked to find that our evacuation route had been eliminated. That has served historically for a fire evacuation and flood evacuation, as well as medical emergency at times when the San Antonio road crossing has water that's too high and Cross Creek is still crossable. This has become a bone of contention, though I'm pleased that there does seem to be discussion and conversation going on about it between all the various parties. But the businesses and residents there, for whom I speak, really are deeply upset that the mine's road project was allowed to take priority over the welfare of the community without discussion, without our involvement. Let there be no doubt that we urgently need our evacuation route to be restored in some form as soon as possible. And we are happy, and I say we, there are many people involved, and I thank the members of the Santa Cruz staff, Santa Cruz County staff, representatives of the mine, and members of the group who live in the San Antonio area. I thank all of them for working together to solve this problem and hopefully to have a permanent evacuation and exit route set up. But in the meantime, a temporary route at the very least, as quickly as possible. We're in the monsoon season, of course, we're in fire season, and so we never know when some issue will arise or some medical emergency. We do have some medically ill members of our community. I thank you very much and hope that this can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And Jesus, can you kind of coordinate with Mr. Fontes to see what can be done to address this issue?
We will.
Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is an ongoing point of contention. We've been working— No, this is—we've been working very hard on this and we are close to a solution.
Great, thank you, Vice Chairman. Anyone else on Zoom or wishing to address the board? Raise your hand. Do you have anybody there, Emmanuel? Okay, we'll move on then to item D, current events. Board of Supervisors, Vice Chairman Bracker.
Thank you very much, and welcome back, gentlemen. I think the first thing that I'd like to talk about is the Port Authority survey that Santa Cruz County and the City of Nogales have contracted, the Greater Nogales-Santa Cruz County Port Authority, to work on the EPA-funded downtown vitality plan. It's basically a gathering of information. A survey has been put out. It's on the website, front page of the county's website and on many other websites, Chamber of Commerce, City of Nogales, so it's really easily accessible. We're looking to hear from the community, and hopefully even people in Sonoda, how they use downtown Nogales, how they use the deconsigny and Morley Gates, so that when we're talking to General Services Agency, GSA, on how they designed the new deconsigny port of entry, that input would be part of that process, so that's very important. And hopefully people can sign up and participate in that survey. Last week, I was able to do a mine tour. I haven't been on one in a while up at South 32. Secretary of State Adrian Fontes came down, and so I took advantage of going on that tour with him and several other members of the community. Also had an opportunity to attend the Rio Rico Historical Society. They have a new exhibit, The Petrified Rocks of Santa Cruz County. I never knew we had Petrified Rocks in Santa Cruz County, but apparently the small volcanoes that we did have in our community created some. And so it's really—it was very interesting. The museum is—it's small, but it is mighty. It is—it's a very interesting exhibit that they have in there. Last Saturday, if you missed it, was National French Friday. I thought that was an important thing to announce from the dais. And also last Saturday, I was able to participate in a candidate forum for the Supervisors for District Three. I'd like to thank the PRT and Viva Nogales for livestreaming that. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Supervisor Miletta.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Along with my colleague Supervisor Reese and Jesus, our county manager, we're up in Tampa. I had the honor and privilege of representing our state association at an executive board meeting where we discussed and listened to keynote speakers. One keynote speaker from the White House was White House Office of International Affairs, is Daniel Coe, who basically talked about the key elements and issues that the White House is focusing on, one being broadband and making sure funds are funneled down, all the way down to county and city level. Mental health is another big issue that's really being looked at because there seems to be a disconnect between the healthcare system. Opioid epidemic is also big. And the Executive Director of NACO, our National Association, Matt Chase, eloquently mentioned how our federal government right now is very, very divisive. And there's a lot of monies being entertained for the wrong reasons. And it's really unfortunate where we're at, at the national level. And he mentioned how important and how—and one of the beautiful things about our associations, both our national and our state association, is that they keep all our meetings, everything we tackle, nonpartisan. And that's the beauty of it. And he spoke about vision, trust, success, journeys of success that counties have, and that's real critical. With that, a couple items he spoke of, key items, is public promise. Public promise has a procurement national system that's barely starting to be trickled down to the counties. And I spoke to our county manager about that. They used the example of Maricopa County using that national procurement for elevators. So that's a system that eventually will trickle down and really help us at the county level. The other one is the public promise insurance. And that's another element that they're looking to really help and trickle down to the county level. And ultimately, the big item he spoke about is the value. Speaking of values, bless you, not losing our values. Yesterday, our county manager and our finance director, Mr. Chavez, and I met with Controll Hernandez. And the reason we met with her is because she solidified $500,000 for a nonprofit which works with developmental disabilities. And we're going to be the go-between to fund our local chapters. Lastly, right now, there's a meeting going on, and I'm pretty excited about this one. Adriana Romero from Border Echo and from the Boys and Girls Club contacted me about two, three weeks ago and asked me to take part in a group that's looking into bringing in Rio Rico Boys and Girls Club. So that's kind of exciting. We're looking at sites. They're out there right now. I'm actually going to be late to the meeting, but I want to thank her for spearheading that group. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Miletta. A few things. First is that we want to condemn the events that took place last Friday on the assassination attempt by former President Trump. There is no call for violence in this time where we're having elections. That was uncalled for, and we certainly do not condone it. It was mentioned at our NACO conference as well that there is no place for violence in our elections. And, you know, we pray for the well-being of the former president. Let the people decide who they want to be in the White House come 2025. We're at the end of 2024. The other thing, too, is I had the opportunity to attend a U.S.-Mexico border counties forum with the incoming chairman of the Immigration Task Force, who is Commissioner Anora Vargas from San Diego County. And the topics that we were talking about, unfortunately, the border is seen as nothing but evil, nothing but illegal immigration and drugs and violence all along the border. But that's far from the truth. And I think when you look at what's happening here is that there is a lot of commerce that comes through that border. There's a lot of opportunities that come through that border. There's a lot of culture that is shared on all the border, 2,000 miles of the southern border. And so, you know, one of the things that we were looking at is we have a PR problem. Because we have to look at, not ignore, what's happening with illegal immigration or what's happening with the drugs that are being confiscated. And by the way, most of the drugs being caught now are at the port of entries. And when both parties, no one can share all the blame, do not do anything to help protect the border, and they use it as political football, shame on them. There needs to be better technology, which they have. They need to fund it to be able to have more Border Patrol officers and customs officers if we want to attract many of the businesses that have left to nearshoring so that they come and invest, not just here in the United States, but also with our biggest trading partner, Mexico, is something that we have to look at. So there's a lot of things that they're going to explore this coming year. And I'll just mention a few of them. Of course, there's environmental issues with water quality, air quality. Of course, the sewage that happens here, and unfortunately, when it rains across here, sometimes our good neighbors open those manhole covers and we have sewer running through the port, through the wash. Of course, economic development, very important with nearshoring opportunities, the international trade that goes on at the border, over $800 billion that is imported from Mexico with goods and services that come to the country. Tourism. We're looking also at a presidential permit permitting to streamline it. I know that when we asked for the expansion of the Mariposa, I think it took us at the Port Authority about four years to five to be able to get a minute entry in there to allow the expansion of that. So hopefully, we can accomplish that. And certainly, public safety, infrastructure, and education. And sometimes, we forget that it is important to begin educating our children at an early age. And I think that more and more, we need to make sure that there are investments there for preschool and pre-kindergarten and kindergarten opportunities because those are going to be our future leaders. And we want to make sure that when they get to the classroom, that they're able to function, they're able to read and write and, you know, be caught up to speed and not fall behind, which is a tragedy in this day and age. So, a lot of good things happening. And with that, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing to report at this time.
Great, thank you. We'll go on to item E, department reports and activities. One, finance, cash, investment, expenditure, and revenue reports. Mr. Chavez.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $20,891,636 with an investment amount of $15,586,000. The road fund has an overall balance of $5,566,566 with an investment amount of $7,684. The flood control district overall balance is $2,198,502 with an investment amount of $290,000. The jail district fund has an overall balance of $4,389,372 with an investment amount of $3,169,619. Total for all funds overall balance is $66,764,561 with an investment amount of $21,49,744 for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $15,730,399.
Great. Any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mauricio.
Yes, sir.
Item Two, any departments wishing to update the board? Okay, seeing none. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to recess and convene into study session.
So move.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are now in the study session. Item One is updated by the Greater Nogales-Santa Cruz County Port Authority by Josh Rubin, Chairman of the Greater Nogales-Santa Cruz Port Authority. Josh, good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Chairman Ruiz, Vice Chairman Bracker, and Supervisor Morela. For the record, my name is Joshua Rubin, and I stand here before you as the Chairman of the Greater Nogales-Santa Cruz County Port Authority. As requested, I'm here today to provide an update on our activities, ongoing efforts on behalf of our community. I want to remind you that as we send out monthly reports, what I plan to present to you is a little condensed version of it, but all our reports can be found on our website. The Port Authority joined a broad coalition of border communities and private sector entities in the opposition of HCR 2060, the bill that would impose several new requirements for cities, counties, and local law enforcement. The county has also signed on to the Arizona Border Counties Coalition in opposition of this proposal. HCR 2060 was approved by legislator and now is slated to be on the next ballot for the upcoming elections. Taking advantage that the chief negotiators of the three USMCA countries were going to be holding one of their annual meetings here in Phoenix, the Port Authority joined with the Port Authorities of Douglas-San Luis Yuma to hold a roundtable discussion with the U.S. Trade Representative Team. That is the office that leads all U.S. negotiations for the world. We took the opportunity to discuss key issues and concerns for Nogales and Arizona. Among them, the recognition that without effective and efficient border and port of entries, trade agreements will never reach their full potential. In fact, a major topic that was discussed was the need to have both U.S. and Mexico invest in updating the systems that are used for processing of imports and exports, a system that today has been proven to be unreliable. We also discussed that the need to protect the U.S. investments in Mexico in the mining and energy sectors, expressed concern over the major investment by China in critical logistical infrastructure, and pushed for the continued protection of the fresh produce industry that imports fresh produce from Mexico into the United States. We also co-hosted a reception with the negotiation teams from all three countries that proved to be very fruitful in the conversation. As a result of that meeting, Lance Judd Meyer of the Fresh Produce Association of Americas has been appointed to the USTR Seasonal and Perishable Agricultural Products Advisory Committee. We are proud to report that the U.S. International Boundary and Water Commission has completed the $38 million cure-in-place for the IOI and the project that adds decades of functional life to IOI that help reduce risk of future breaches of the pipeline. We are also grateful for the efforts of Congressman Juan Cisca money to secure $12 million that will go towards the maintenance and operation of IOI going forward. We continue to work with our congressional delegations on the deployment of a drug bundle trap that will be installed to stop any future drug incursions in the IOI. We held an economic development roundtable discussion with the North American Development Bank, NAB Bank, where we brought over a dozen economic development agencies to meet with the bank and explore possible opportunities to collaborate and secure financing from the bank for the future. That same day, we also co-hosted another border congressional briefing for the nine of the 11 congressional offices. The discussion was extensive, and we touched on many topics that impacted our community. CBP staffing, the model that is used to define the number of staff needed at our ports of entry, the need to secure additional funds to pay for infrastructure, and the need to ensure a harmonized application of agricultural inspections at the ports of entry. There was no topic off the table. We also responded to the meeting requests from the design and engineering firms that are interested in eventual RFP for the design of the I-19 interchanges, Ruby Road and Rio Rico. Special thanks to Supervisor Bracker and County Manager Valdez for joining us in these meetings. I want to stress that we are open to meeting with these firms, but inform them that we meet with any firm that is interested in the project and that we'll share the same insights to each and every single one of them. We feel it is important for these firms to hear from those of us on the ground that live with the congestion of the intersections and for us to try figuring out to come up with future solutions. Finally, on this topic, to ensure clarity, it is Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, that will be issuing the RFP, not the Port Authority. Two weeks ago, we participated in a meeting with ADOT to discuss a variety of transportation-related issues, including the need to advance modernization of I-19 interchanges, improve on SR-83, Potera Creek Bridge, and the need to address several safety concerns on SR-189. As a result, ADOT has produced a series of informative videos on the safe use of the roundabout on SR-189 and Target Range Road. The Port Authority has made these videos available through our social media channels and ask anybody to please share them. More recently, we participated in the first meeting with the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, to launch a downtown revitalization study. This study will help leverage the anticipated investment that the modernization of deconsigny port of entry by helping us define what we want Nogales to look like in the future. This effort is not what the update of port will look like, as that is strictly a federal process. However, we can look at our downtown, our retail, our hospitality sectors, our traffic mobility and other areas, and jointly come up with a vision for our future. The downtown revitalization study is being conducted by the EPA, and the findings of the survey will help us feed the information to the EPA. It is important that we, as a community, give our opinions to the EPA team, as this is our community. I hope by now, you're all aware— thank you Supervisor Bracker— that the Port Authority has launched a survey to solicit community input that will be presented to the EPA. We are grateful to the county for including the information on the survey on the county website and social media platforms. The survey will remain available to anyone to fill out until August 2nd. We're happy to say that as of yesterday, we have reached over 250 responses. There's a lot more activities that we can discuss, but I want to be respectful of your time. Please know, if you have any questions in the future, you can reach out to us. Thanks again for the ongoing support, and I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Josh. Any questions of Mr. Rubin?
Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Josh.
Item Two is an update by the Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, PARA, by Ms. Carolyn Schaefer. PARA co-chairman on various activities. The organization has taken part. Good morning, Carolyn. Good to see you.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's good to be seen. And good to see all of you. Greetings, Supervisors, county staff, and members of the public. I am Carolyn Schaefer, a 28-year resident of Santa Cruz County and here today as mission coordinator with Patagonia Area Resource Alliance. I come to this work with significant business management experience, including 30 years in law firm management and 12 years as the co-owner of a union power line construction company. One chapter in my life story is that I held mining claims in the Patagonia Mountains for five years. I was what the 1872 mining law was designed for, someone using small-hand tools and having minimal impact on public lands. We are all in uncharted territory. There is a proposed mine operation in the Patagonia Mountains that will have significant impact on all of Santa Cruz County. Now that the mine plan of operations is public information, we are identifying the concerns of a 21st-century industrialized mine operating in what is a global biodiversity hotspot. We are the only location in all of the United States— of the United States with a mining project that has been admitted to the FAST 41 program. Environmental protections are being weakened continuously. The mine, the more, pardon me, the more we learn about the mine operations, the more our concern grows. It's my first time using this. Where?
I'll just click.
Okay. Next slide, please.
Okay.
Whoops, there was one more before that. Please. Because it is important to always do a land acknowledgement. We live in an incredible county. We are documented as inhabited for more than 10,000 years. We are very close to what were major trade route intersections from ancient times, both east-west and north-south. And the reason we are documented as so well-occupied is because we have an incredible environment here that supports all forms of life energy, and that's what we are looking to protect. Next slide, please. The Patagonia Mountains and Sonora Creek watershed and most of, if not all of, Santa Cruz County are part of the Old Midrail and Archipelago known as the Sky Islands. The Patagonia Mountains are at the heart of that biodiversity. Scientists have identified the Sky Islands as one of the five regions in the world most in need of research and protection for species survival. When we talk about the need for moving away from fossil fuels and national security, the reality of our biological diversity has got to be part of that conversation. Half Earth by Edward O. Wilson is where that information is written. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the Santa, pardon me, the Sonora Creek watershed. I love all those blue lines. It has unique geological features because we are at the juncture of six different biological areas, which is why we have plants and animals from all of them, again, unlike anywhere else in all of North America. We are also a cultural crossroads with the archaeological evidence of Tona Odom and Pascayac, a Spanish colonial past. And in case you haven't heard, Dr. Danny Seymour, an archaeologist, within this past year identified Santa Cruz County as the known location for the Coronado movement through Arizona. Previously, it was known where that expedition was in Mexico and where it ended up in New Mexico. Now we know it went through Santa Cruz County. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read all this information, by the way. Each of you were provided with a PDF of this, and anyone who wants one can let me know, and I'm happy to get it to you. Patagonia Area Resource Alliance came together in late 2011. Our mission is to work to hold federal and state agencies to the existing laws and regulations with respect to exploratory and mining activities. We collaborate with strategic partners to ensure that any mining activity meets the highest science-based standards and to protect the water, land, and wildlife of the Patagonia Mountains from the negative impacts of modern industrialized mining. And we support the expansion of a nature-based restorative economy that depends upon the biodiversity and cultural heritage of our region. Excellent. Thank you. This is a list of the current partners that we are working with. The top list is a group of the national organizations, including Center for Biological Diversity, Defenders of Wildlife, Earth Justice, Earthworks, and Western Mining Action Project statewide. We're working with Save the Sea of Santa Rita's, Sierra Club, Grand Canyon Chapter, Sky Island Alliance, and the Southern Arizona Chapter for Dark Skies International. Because we are such a biological diversity hotspot, we have an incredible group of organizations located in Patagonia. Borderlands Restoration Network, Amy Canny's Calabasas Alliance, and Friends of Santa Cruz River in Patagonia, Friends of Sonora Creek, the Nature Conservancy, and Tucson Audubon. All of those organizations, all except for Calabasas Alliance, came together to perform in 2015 the Town of Patagonia Flood and Flow Committee. And it's important for everybody to know that many of the environmental organizations have been very active since 2015 on discussing the mining issues that face us. And important work has happened in establishing baseline information around water and biodiversity. There have been established ongoing monitoring programs for water quality and quantity and biodiversity. And an important thing happening with the Town of Patagonia right now is the Flood and Flow Committee is working to create a watershed management group where all stakeholders from across that watershed will be able to discuss the issues of concern. Next slide, please. So what about jobs and economy? Santa Cruz County's nature-based restorative economy is very strong. There are numbers that are there. This study was done. Five of our organizations fundraised to have the University of Arizona create this study. It was, as I said, released in '21. It was based on 2019 information because of concerns about the impact that COVID would have on the information. We are currently in the process of engaging with the University of Arizona about updating this information. Next slide, please. Yes, there was historical mining in the Patagonia Mountains. In the early 1900s, the amount of material removed was little over 14,000 tons. South 32 tells us, beginning in 2027, they intend to remove over 4.7 million tons per year. This is dramatically different from the historical mining that we have. Plus, it is occurring in a time of climate adaptation, water significant issues, including a long-term drought. We must pay attention. Next slide, please. This is one I'm not going to read to everybody, but the map on the left, all those colored areas, the green and the shades of purple or blue, whatever you want to call it, are mining claims surrounding the town of Patagonia. There's approximately 74,000 acres. Those claims are not exactly, but somewhat divided half and half between a Canadian exploratory company, Barksdale Resources, and the mining company, Australian Mining Company, South 32. Next slide, please. This map shows the biodiversity areas out in the Patagonia Mountain. It's based on information from natureserve.org. The pink areas are the highest biological diversity in the Patagonia Mountains. They also overlay the proposed mining activity. Mining companies pay no royalties on minerals removed from public lands. Oil and gas pays royalties. Mining companies do not. There are ongoing efforts to reform the 1872 mining law, and we are fortunate, I believe, that Congressman Rahal Ghalva is one of the leaders on making those reform actions. Hopefully, we will see them. Our experts tell us, not this year, when this Congress, but hopefully in the future. Next slide, please. We refuse to be a sacrifice zone. We are a classic definition of what is a potential sacrifice zone because of our environmental justice and social justice factors. And that is what all of our organizations are working to do, is to not allow this area to become a sacrifice zone. Next slide, please. Updates on our current actions. I gave each of you yesterday. I forwarded the current legal updates. These are always a part of PAR's newsletters, so if you don't see them, you are welcome to sign up for the newsletter, and we update on a monthly basis. The state litigations are essentially at the moment. The litigation is on one water permit for the aquifer protection permit. This is because the state agency is supposed to follow a regulation that says you shall install a point of compliance on a vertical plane, i.e. a well. This is about aquifer protection. Instead, the agency chose to designate a conceptual point of compliance. Maybe someday we'll do it. And to add insult to injury, the X on the map was a location on private property not owned by either mining company or public lands. The owner gave us an affidavit as part of that litigation saying, no, you can't put a well on my property. The other two permits that are currently pending and in process right now are the Arizona Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit and also the Air Quality Permit. So I'm happy we'll be getting some updates from ADQ on what is going on with air quality today. The FAST 41 National Environmental Protection Act Scoping Comments. Those comments just closed on June 10. 16 organizations came together, coordinated by PAR, to file these comments. There were about 35 people with expertise: biodiversity, air, water, public safety, public health, et cetera, who wrote the mine plan of operations and then listed their concerns. They were all combined into this document, which was filed, as I said, on June 10. That process continues. What we wait for now is the issuance of a draft environmental impact statement. The Forest Service is the lead agency on issuing that. The timeline says that the DEIS Draft Environmental Impact Statement will be issued by May of 2025. They could issue it at any time between now and then. Because three federal agencies filed significant comments also, I believe that the Forest Service will take the longer timeframe rather than the shorter timeframe. Those three agencies were the Environmental Protection Agency, which filed significant concerns about water and the climate reality we are living with, the National Park Service that filed concerns about air quality, stating that this project is so close to the Swahili National Park that there are significant concerns because that has already got issues, and also the Fish and Wildlife Service, which filed significant biodiversity comments. With respect to the Community Protection and Benefits Agreement, and yesterday afternoon, the county, the Town of Patagonia, and the City of Nogales issued a joint press release on that the ongoing conversation about a protection and benefits agreement, and we are happy to participate in that. As I have shared, PAR, as coordinating these 16 organizations who are continuing to look at the mine plan of operations to expand upon the concerns that were listed in the scope and comments, we will keep each of the governmental entities informed of what these concerns are so that they can be a part of the protections and benefits agreement. And quite frankly, personally, I don't also want us to be protecting. Yes, we want to create some benefits. This is an opportunity for us, as a greater community, to co-create the better world with the realities we are dealing with that will serve our children, our grandchildren, and the next seven generations. Next slide, please. We can't forecast how the story ends, but we can and will guarantee it will be a better story if we work for the best solution for the ecosystem. It is already a better story than it would have been when the exploratory company first went public here in 2011 and wanted to do open-pit mining, and that has gone away. Let us continue to work for the greater good and not be bedazzled by promises. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Chair, I would thank you very much for your work, and thank you very much for your presentation today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for sending the PDFs ahead of time. So it's always better to read them and look at them, and when you present, kind of keep up with what you're saying. So thank you and have a good one.
Thank you. All of you, too. Thank you, everyone.
Item three, draft boundary recommendations for the revised National Ambient Air Quality Standards for Fine Particulate Matter, PM 2.5, by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Elias Toon, Zachary Dorn, Elizabeth Sterner, and Allison Price.
Good morning.
And welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I do believe we have a presentation. My name is Zachary Dorn with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality with the Air Quality Improvement Planning Section. Presenting today with me is Allison Price, who is going to cover the technical side of things. So our presentation is going to cover the draft boundary recommendation for the revised annual PM 2.5 or Fi in particulate matter National Ambient Air Quality Standard. Next slide, please. Just to give you a back one, if you don't mind. Just to give you a high level overview of where the presentation is going to head. First, we're going to talk a little bit about what is PM 2.5 and what it means for public health, and then talk about EPA's revised annual standard for PM 2.5. Next, we'll talk about the timeline that we're looking at for both the boundary recommendation process and then EPA's designation timeline as well. We'll cover the five factors that EPA recommends that states examine when they are making their recommendations, and then we will dive into the Santa Cruz County-specific analysis for the recommendation. And then we'll cover a PM 2.5 GIS tool that our GIS team at ADQ has developed. Next slide, please. So what is, just to step back and talk about what is PM 2.5. Particulate matter in general refers to kind of a complex mixture of things that are in the air. That can be dust, dirt, smoke, or liquid droplets. The 2.5 refers to the aerodynamic diameter of the particle size. So we're talking about, if you look at the graphic up there, we're talking about particles that are very small, smaller than the size of a human hair. It's that insert. Then the main issue with them is that they are so small that they can cause health effects by getting into your lungs and potentially even into your bloodstream. Next slide, please. So there are numerous studies that EPA has relied on in terms of justifying the change in the revised PM 2.5 NACs. The Global Burden of Disease Project lists PM 2.5 as the greatest pollutant in terms of burden of health impacts. So there can be short-term exposures, issues related to PM 2.5 exposure, such as aggravated lung disease, acute bronchitis. Long-term issues can relate to chronic issues such as chronic bronchitis and even potentially premature death. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about the PM 2.5 NACs, there are four different standards that we're talking about. EPA has revised only that top one. It is an annual standard, so it's looking at a three-year average from monitoring data for areas. And so that was lowered from an average of 12 micrograms per cubic meter to nine micrograms per cubic meter. The other standards, which are both an annual, which is a secondary standard, which refers to welfare-based conservative primary deals with health-based issues, that the PM 2.5 annual standard for secondary issues has remained the same. Same thing with the 24-hour standard, and then the PM standard was also retained at its current level. Next slide, To give you an overview in terms of our timeframe, there are two statutes that are important for this process. There is the Clean Air Act, and there is also a state statute, 49405, that details the timeframe, which ADQ is to make its boundary recommendations to the governor's office. So the start of that process was February 7, 2024, when EPA promulgated its revised NACs, lowering it from 12 micrograms to nine. So right now, we're in the process of So right now, we're in the process of soliciting informal feedback on our draft boundary recommendation, and the statute 49405 directs ADQ to then hold a formal public comment period. We are looking at holding that public comment period beginning in September, October of this year with a formal public hearing held in October or November. The statute requires that we provide the boundary recommendations to the governor's office by January 7th, 2025, and then the governor's office is required to submit those, their recommendations to EPA no later than February 7th, 2025. Then the Clean Air Act gives EPA one additional year to make its official designations, and they may take up to one additional year. So they may have up to two years if they believe that they need additional information to make that decision. Next slide, please. And so when we're talking about the designation process, the state is to recommend areas of the state into three different categories, both nonattainment, which means an area that is not attaining the relevant max, or is an area that is contributing to nonattainment in a nearby area. There's unclassifiable, which means that there's not sufficient data to classify the area as nonattainment or attainment. And then there is attainment, which means that the area is meeting the standard based on monitoring data. EPA may modify the recommendations that the governor's office submits to EPA, but they have to provide 120 days' notice before they do so. Next slide. And so when we're looking at the recommendation, EPA recommends that states review five specific factors: air quality data, emissions and emissions-related data, meteorology, geography, and topography. And then there's a fifth factor, which is jurisdictional boundaries. EPA uses a weight of evidence test, so it is directing states to balance these five factors together in terms of making its recommendation. And in their memorandum for implementing this boundary recommendation process, they state that the guiding principle for this evaluation is to include within the boundaries of the nonattainment area any areas of emissions of PM 2.5 or PM 2.5. And to give you a high-level overview of what's going on at the state, so we are making initial recommendations for three nonattainment areas within the state. There's one in Maricopa County, one in Pinal County, and then one here in Santa Cruz County. You'll note that, as we'll get into some more detail, the recommendation for this area is based on the 2006 maintenance area. Next slide. Next slide, please. All right, I'll turn it over to Allison.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Zach. Okay, so I'm going to dive into some of the technical factors that were reviewed when we did that five-factor analysis for looking at the boundary recommendation in Santa Cruz County. So the first was air quality data. We took a look at the past 10-year trends to see what the design value looked like and if what we're seeing currently is in alignment with what we've seen historically. So what you can see here is that we have kind of hovered right above that nine micrograms per cubic meter value. We did take a dip below that line in 2019, and then it kind of headed upwards. We saw a trend there, and now it's coming back down. Next slide, please. So in reviewing the air quality factor, we took a look at, of course, the nonattaining monitor that's located at the Nogales post office. That's a neighborhood-scale monitor, and it's supposed to be representative of a four-kilometer radius around that surrounding monitor. But most importantly, it's, we need to note that a nonattainment area and boundary recommendation cannot go below that buffer zone. So it has to at least include the recommended area. Next slide, please. So returning back to that air quality analysis, we took a look at seasonal trends to see if there was a certain time of the year that PM 2.5 is more concentrated. And what you can see there is that winter tends to be the time when we do see that higher concentration. It takes a dip in spring and summer and then comes back up slightly in the fall. I also want to direct your attention to that orange bar. That's coming from 2021 data, which will fall off when EPA is reviewing our boundary recommendations. They'll be looking at 2022, 2023, and 2024 data. So 2021 was particularly high, so it's possible that we will be attaining that nine micrograms per cubic meter mark with really good year for 2024, but we're not sure, so of course we're planning accordingly. And then the graph on the right there is looking at hourly trends, who we wanted to see is a certain time of day when PM 2.5 concentration is at its highest. So you can see there that we do have kind of an upward tick in the morning time, and this is when temperatures are cooler, and then as temperatures warm up, we see it dip. Pollutants are able to kind of escape the inversion that could be setting in. And then in the evening time, we do see that kind of, that pollution is kind of back at the surface and unable to escape. So it starts to go back upwards towards the evening hours. Next slide, please. So that second factor we took a look at is emissions and emissions-related data. We use information from the National Emissions Inventory from 2020, and this is for all of Santa Cruz County. So the column on the left-hand side is going to show you the different sources and what their contribution is to the grand total. So about 85% coming from that non-point source category, and 21% of that coming from crops and livestock dust, a smaller portion coming from wildfires, a little bit more coming from commercial cooking. So these are the different source sectors that are contributing most heavily to PM 2.5 in Santa Cruz County, as documented in that National Emissions Inventory. I also want to direct your attention to the point sources. So we do only have two that are documented in that 2020 NEI, and it's going to represent about four tons per year. So it's a relatively small number when you're looking at the grand total of 213 at the bottom there for PM 2.5. So again, it's just, it's not the biggest factor of where particulate matter is coming from. And then we have about 3% coming from the non-road category and 10% coming from that on-road source category. So this is a good way that we can kind of break down and see what are those greater contributions to PM 2.5. Next slide, please. All right, so in reviewing that emissions data, again, we wanted to look at population trends. This can be a good proxy for some of those non-point source categories. So for instance, residential wood burning, potentially commercial cooking, some of these areas where we do see higher concentrations. So this is data from 2020 population. The darker, or the darker red is going to be the highest concentration, and then as you get to the darker blue is where it starts to disperse a little bit more. We also did plot the two point sources that were indicated on that previous table. It's a little bit challenging to see, but there's one that's within the boundary, that's Valencia Power Station, and one outside of the boundary, and that's going to be the airport. And then we also plotted the annual average daily traffic to get a sense of where these emissions from that on-road source sector is coming from. So the darker red along Highway 19 there is going to be where higher concentrations of traffic are, and then those green lines are going to represent lower concentrations. Next slide, please. So now we're going to get into meteorology and then geography and topography. So first, I'm just going to explain this chart that you're looking at, and that's a little intense. So what you're seeing there is called a pollution rose, and if you're looking at it from top to bottom, it's the year of 2021, then 2022, and 2023, and it's broken down by season. So you see spring on the left-hand side, summer, autumn, and then fall. So we're mostly going to talk about 2023 for this presentation, so that bottom portion of the graph there. And what we can tell, it's plotting wind direction and pollution concentration, and we see that in the wintertime is when those darker red values are coming in, and that's going to be when it's in alignment with when we see those higher concentrations of PM 2.5, and that it's coming from the south-southwest area in relation to where that monitor is located. So just a good indication, again, of where we're kind of seeing the direction of those sources coming from. And then looking at the map on the right side there, we mapped air, airshed data, which follows generally waterways and where, like, smoke would follow along those waterways. So in Santa Cruz County, we're just in one airshed, which essentially means air is going to not follow any sort of boundary line. Of course, it's going to move in between this area. We also do have mountains, as you know, in this area, and it's a little bit higher in elevation on the southern part of the border, and it does show that there's some drainage that occurs in the direction of Nogales, Arizona. And then as those temperatures are cool, they kind of hover in the area, and then as they warm up, they're able to escape and kind of leave that overall area. Next slide, please. And then that fifth factor, the jurisdictional boundaries, is primarily, we would be looking at sovereign nations and tribal land. We don't have any in this particular map segment that we're showing here, but we do take a look at where national forests are, where state parks are, where national park services, various entities that would be involved in the jurisdictional planning. Next slide, please. So we plotted some statistics here of what we're capturing within that nonattainment boundary that you've seen outlined throughout this presentation. So of the PM 2.5 source sector, just point sources, we got 9.5%. So that's the one, that's Valencia Power Station essentially is within the boundary. That's how much of the overall particulate from point sources is being captured. The greater source would be the airport, but again, overall, only four tons per year, so it's a relatively low number. And then AADT stands for Average Annual Daily Traffic, so we are capturing about 74% of that. And then VMT is Vehicle Miles Traveled, very similar to Average Annual Daily Traffic, and we're capturing about 51% of that. And then we do have a larger percentage of population density, 74%. And then significant land use, we didn't have a good data source to look at for what we were capturing in that area, so it didn't apply to the Santa Cruz County recommendation. Next slide, please. And then, as Zach indicated earlier in the presentation, ADQ's GIS team has put together this awesome tool for us so that members of the public can go to our website, and they can turn on and off layers, and they can really get in and see where they are in relation to where these boundaries are. We know that this is really a GIS-intensive review, so it's hard to look at static maps. So if you would like, this is available to the public. You can go onto our website, and you can turn on those layers, zoom in, and see what parts are being considered in this factor. Next slide, please. We also have a QR code where you can sign up and subscribe to our newsletter and really get the latest information on our planning process and where we're at within this procedure and timeline. And next slide, please. Lastly is our contact information, so we would like to open it up if there's any informal feedback, question, comments. We would definitely appreciate that. The best we're going to do with these boundaries is when we hear from you guys, members of the public and local jurisdictions, and understanding what the area looks like on the ground. So please, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take that now. If you would like to direct your questions to our email, that airplanning@azdeq.gov is the best way to reach all of us at once, and you can also direct specific questions to any one of us on the team who've been working on the project.
Great, thank you. Gentlemen, any questions?
Lot of information. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Great. We appreciate. So, well, maybe I do have a question. So this is above and beyond the PM 10 we already have in place?
Correct. So it is a retaining of that boundary as well. It's the same boundary as the 2006 maintenance area.
And then the other thing, too, because I saw the little square that you increased, that it doesn't preclude any from the outside also being measured?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
So I saw your little square that you have. So you go up a little bit higher from the four-kilometer that you have down at the post office. You've increased the size for the 2.5, but, so where you have Firely Bill there, and then you have Keno Springs, so anything that comes from there will also be measured.
Yeah, anything that's being measured up at Nogales Post Office is really capturing kind of that four-kilometer area. Unfortunately, we don't have any other PM 2.5 monitors in Santa Cruz County, so we can't, we can't know fully at this time in our analysis what would be coming from where that's north of that monitor and outside of that buffer.
And then, I mean, you kind of mentioned it, in the winter, when there's a lot of wood burning to our neighbors to the south is what really does have that increase. You know, one of the things, though, is with EPA, and I'm concerned that the Chevron from the Supreme Court may have an impact on what EPA and the states will be able to do. So I know they kind of brushed it aside because unfortunately, you can't get Congress to agree on anything, let alone any kind of, you know, legislation that would really affect this, and it's been the agencies that have been working with good science and good data to put in certain safeguards within there. So I hope this isn't effective, but we will wait and see once it done. And then you're looking at about a two-year period for implementation.
I'll turn it to Zach for that one.
Mr. Chair, that is a good question. So in terms of when we'd be looking at like an implementation plan for the nonattainment area, if it is designated, it is typically due 18 months after EPA finalizes the designations. So we'd probably be looking at like 2027, 2028, in terms of a timeframe for a plan.
Great, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for coming down for this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee.
Great. Safe travels. So at this time, shall entertain a motion to adjourn our study session and convene into the jail district.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item one, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill vacant two detention officer positions. Everything in order and budgeted for, Mr. Chavez?
Yes, they are, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Shall entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion, possible action toward contract to advance correctional health care pursuant to RFP number B 0324 CO30, and enter into an agreement for jail medical services in the amount of $841,000, hold on, $654.56 annually plus inflator adjusted effective July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2027, plus up to three years of one-year renewal. This is from the sheriff's office. Everything in order, legal team?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moran has worked diligently with the detention services and the sheriff's office to arrange for and cooperate with, or conclude with a very good medical provide, medical contract for detention. So all is in order.
Great. Shall entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Shall entertain a motion to reconvene regular session?
So moved.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion carries unanimously. Let's go to consent agenda. Items one through 10, through 17, and 19 through 23. Shall entertain a motion to approve those consent agenda items as item J 18 will be discussed under action items?
So it's one through 20 with item 18 removed?
Right.
Okay, so moved.
Clear second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
There's several positions that are here. These have all been budgeted?
Mr. Chairman, they're all budgeted for, correct?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chairman.
Not a problem. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, shall entertain a motion to recess and convene into executive session pursuant to ARS 3843103A3, discussion, consultation for legal advice regarding litigation and case status in the Santa Cruz County versus Audit USA matter, and also for item 18 on the recommendation on the sampling privilege for Pigeon Liquor Store for legal advice. So shall entertain a motion?
Moved.
Do we hear a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We will now recess and convene into executive session. We'll ask everyone to clear the, and we'll come back.